For those of you joining us, thank you for being here. It's a full house and I appreciate your time. And please make sure to sign in. The sign in sheet is on the podium. That way we know who is here with us this evening. Councilmember Louie, do we have a quorum, sir?
Yes, sir.
Patrick Chadpulsey, are you in the house?
Yes, sir.
If you would step forward, please, sir, and provide an invitation for us.
Oh, well, Christ has sent me, Father, and we just thank for the opportunity to be here tonight. And we just pray that you be these city leaders as they make decisions that pertain to this community. And, Lord, we pray that you would bring wisdom and knowledge and understanding to the situation. And, Lord, we just pray that what is done is to help our community and help the people that are here. And, Lord, we thank you for their time, their abilities, and their willingness to be here and their willingness to serve. God, we ask that you bless this community, have your will and way in it, and we'll thank you and we'll praise you for it. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Councilmember Hannah, can I ask a question, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the banner of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Council, we do have an agenda before you. There were amendments at the staff level needing to be made. Motion, if I can have a motion to amend the agenda, needs to include item number four on the public hearing, which is listed on your current agenda. Also, number two from unfinished business, which is an annex issue, number two under unfinished business, needs to be added as number five for public hearing.
Make the motioning agenda be adopted as corrected.
Have a motion now, say.
Say it.
Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes, sir? Thank you, council. This evening, we get to recognize a few of our elected, we get to recognize and celebrate two of our elected officials. They are continuing to increase their knowledge through education. I'm proud to present Councilmember Hannah and Dr. Pompeter with the following. Councilmember Hannah, from the University of Georgia, Carle Vincent Institute of Government and the Georgia Municipal Association, they hereby certify that Brandon G. Hannah has successfully completed the newly elected officials institute dated March 1st, 2024. Congratulations, sir. The mail is, I'll have to say, the mail is a little slow, so these are dated in advance. University of Georgia, Carle Vincent Institute of Government and the Georgia Municipal Association hereby certify that Sunny Pompeter has successfully completed the requirements for certificate of achievement through the Harold Holt Municipal Training Institute dated January 28th, 2024. Congratulations, sir. Let's go grab a pitcher. I haven't just been.
What?
Wait, we gotta use our.
We gotta look at one and then.
Or pin him down, that's.
Now look at us.
Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is public hearing time. There are some ground rules to wait for a public hearing. Any public comment, if you were here to speak on items, will ask if you state your name and your address for the record, you'll be timed to three minutes. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing with the ground rules of time of three minutes, stating your name and address for the record. Public hearing, item number one, and three burrs.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, audience. Mayor Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. So tonight on the agenda, we have two items that pertain to the Department of Community Affairs Low Income Tax Credit Housing Initiative, which is based off the median income for the area. So one thing that I just wanted to put up here is the difference between the Jasper median income and the City of Atlanta median income, because we are lumped in with Atlanta. So that, for me, when you'll hear the other presentations from the applicants, I have asked for an additional condition that would put, allow for more people that make, say, $30,000, $35,000 a year qualify, as well as the other units which are 47 and I think above, but they'll get more into that with you. There we go. So item number one is a request to rezone 100 Darnell Road, 4.73 acres, from C2 general commercial to multifamily residential. So the existing conditions right now, it is vacant and wooded. It has frontage on Darnell Road, and it is the 4.73. There are public utilities in the area, and it is surrounded mostly by residential and then the commercial on the eastern side. So as you see here, you have the county area, so overall residential, highway business, agricultural, and then that C2 parcel, which is right behind Darnell, which is the commercial, which abuts that commercial, Kroger, Home Depot area. So Darnell Road is a county road. One of the conditions of approval would be to bring that road up to county spec, which is also the same spec that the city uses. So future development map, as part of our comprehensive plan, which is something that the county does every five to 10 years updating it, to make sure that we are going in a sustainable direction, we have our future development map that basically outlines where we see our growth going in the future 10, 15, 20 years. So this right here, where you see the arrow, that is what is referred to as our West Jasper Gateway Corridor. And right now, as you see that red, the solid red is commercial, and then it follows, by adding this development, it'll follow the standard development patterns, which go commercial, multifamily residential, residential attached, and then out further to your suburbs, which are single family development. So this project is, will consist of 38 units within two buildings. The project that they are outlining is for the 60% to 80% of the median income, and that's where I was saying, that's a little bit high, let's get a couple of units in there in the 40 area to reach more of our Jasper residents. So this is what is known as affordable or workforce housing. This is not Section 8, this is not an HUD project. So these have different criterias in order to meet the standards of the Department of Community Affairs. So DCA has their applications once a year. They're due.
Sorry.
They are due May 17th. So this is a reward base, so usually the applicant here is somewhere in between August or November, whether they've been chosen, where the city has been chosen. So when we come down to our recommendations, to the left, you see the drawing, right now it's a concept plan. It has the two entrances off of Darnell. You see the two units, which will be, which will house the 38 total units for development. So these are our general conditions of approval, so these are some things that I like to point out to ensure that we have sustainable growth at this property. So the maximum number of units allowed for this parcel is 38 units, so that will be divided in between those two buildings. You can see they have amenities that are required per code. Traffic impact assessment will be completed, and the buildup and offsite improvements, such as the improvement to Darnell Road, are included in those. We are aware that there is 15 feet of pavement, it is 15 foot wide, and it has a 60-foot ride away according to the county. So as always, because we are balancing growth, the rezoning of this property does not guarantee the availability of water and sewer. So as you've been hearing, everything in the paper, it's, we are not, we do not guarantee capacity. So number five, site plan review. So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, breathe. So of 38 units, 10% of those units, so read four, will have to be at the 40% of AMI. So that would be your 40% of that number, the almost 70,000. So that allows for people who are making somewhere in the range of $27,000 to $35,000 a year, they would be able to qualify for this type of housing. Whereas the other 60 and 80% are the higher, 47,000 a year, and so on up. So site plan review, one of the things that we do at the city is we require you to go through site plan review, and this includes things like meeting our building standards, providing stormwater, stormwater resolutions that prevent, well, create our water quality and quantity is controlled, also looking at our streets, how they're built, our utilities, and landscaping. So one additional condition for this is a reversion clause. If this property is not bought by April 2025 for this purpose, then this property will revert back to commercial.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, under the public hearing, is there anyone else here to speak on this item? If you will please, in the very back there, you have, if you will state your name and address, please, ma'am.
To the podium?
Sure, come on up.
Why not?
That'd be good. Come join us.
I'm Sarah Chumlin. I live on Darnell Road. There is a small piece of property between this development and me, and I'm anti, simply because the water line is very old. It's a two-inch line, and the road is basically, Darnell Road is basically a one-lane road, and I don't think they're going to pave or repair Darnell Road from their entrance all the way to Philadelphia Road. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. At this time, is there any others here to speak on this item? Yes, sir. Just take your name and address.
My name's Tommy Chumlin. I live at 330 Darnell Road. You can't even get out in the road at Highway 53 now. You have to, of a morning, you have to wait till the red light at Wendy's stops traffic all the way back to Darnell Road, and somebody has to let you out. And if you have 25 or 30 more, then where's that gonna put the traffic? And it's the same way if you go around to Philadelphia Road. And it's, like I said, it's a small road. If you pull up there and somebody has to turn in, you've got to back up or they can't get out of the road. It's just a, I mean, it's a, the traffic there is awful in the morning.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anywhere else present wishing to speak on this item? Yes, sir. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Josh Thompson. I'm at 307 Burt's Laurel Woodstock, Georgia. I'm with Piedmont Housing Group, I'm the owner. So just to at least briefly break down who we are, we're workforce housing developers of built workforce housing and senior housing at an affordable level across Georgia and South Carolina. We've done that since 2010. We've developed over 36 properties, over 90% of which are in rural Georgia or South Carolina. Those are the only two states that we work in outside of one small deal in Oklahoma. Our proposal is for 38 units of workforce housing, and these are going to be folks that would work at the nearby Home Depot, Kroger, any other service restaurant type industries around town. As was mentioned earlier, I think our proposal was between 50% of AMI and 60% of AMI, and then I understand the request for the 40% of area median income folks, just to make sure some of the folks right now who, in addition to the missing middle that can't find housing, can't find housing. Our apartment communities are built, they, if you're looking at them from the outside or you live in one of them, you can't tell the difference between those and the market rate apartment communities, because that's the standards that we build to, the standards that we have to build to, that our investors require, that the state requires. And so I get usually in municipalities, there's some concern about whether it's a Section 8 housing, which it's not. Unfortunately, we do work under a program called the Longham Housing Tax Credit Program, which they would have called the Workforce Housing Program, and they passed it in 1986 under Reagan, but they didn't. And so I understand the necessity to kind of explain what the program entails. We applied to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for an allocation of tax credits. Those tax credits then come to us, and then we go out into the open market.
One minute, ma'am, sir.
Work with folks to bring in equity for those tax credits, and then instead of me going out there to a lender and asking for loan proceeds to finance it, we finance it with tax credits, which allows us to keep rents low, but we don't have the debt burden on it. So we can provide market rate housing to folks who work in the workforce in the City of Jasper and maintain the level as expected of any market rate house.
Thank you, sir.
I can answer any questions you guys want, but I'm obviously sensitive to y'all's time.
There are conditions on the approval. You understand and accept the conditions?
I did. And then I, just one more quick thing, though there are two of us here, the state will only fund one of us. So if there were 10 of us in here asking for tax credits in different developers, they wouldn't fund 10, they'd only unfund one of us. Just to kind of let you guys know about this item.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What is the height of your building? The height?
So I'll be honest, in a public hearing, your public comments towards us, if you guys would like to have those questions answered, council, are we going to entertain a back and forth?
I don't think we have plans on this to discuss that yet.
I can certainly answer.
I haven't approved yet.
The height of the building is 35 feet.
35.
At the top of the roof.
Yes, sir.
My name's Joe Chumlin. I live on Darnell Road. I know you said it was not Section 8 housing, but you mentioned the income of around $27,000 to $35,000. Could anybody tell me what are the requirements for Section 8 housing in Pickens County for a two-person household?
So in general, Section 8 housing is the government comes in and says, hey, you make $10,000, you're only going to pay a third of your income in rent, so therefore you can only pay $3,000 a year in rent. The program we utilize says, hey, if you take our tax credits, you have to agree to rent your property and your apartments to folks that made 6% or less, or 80% or less, and there's a bunch of caveats in there, of area median income, you have to rent it at an affordable level, which is 35% of those numbers. So in general, we still, we run it like a normal apartment community, where somebody hasn't paid me rent, or they're evicted because I have to have their rent in order to pay debt, in order to pay water bill, power bill, landscapers, and all of that. That, so that's the drastic differences. Section 8 is a subsidy of the tenant's rent. The tax credits that we utilize is just meant to lower our debt burden, so that we can still run it as a normal apartment community, but at the same time, charge affordable rents. So rather than being a subsidy for someone not to pay rent, or not have to pay as much rent, they still have to pay us, but we just agreed to rent it to them for less. So again, folks can make up that 80% of your area median income, which, I hate to come in here and say we're basing it off Atlanta stuff, because I know that's not, I don't want to hear that in Woodstock, and I don't want, I know y'all don't necessarily want to hear Atlanta stuff in Jasper. But what it does allow us is to open it up to the missing middle. So folks that work at the local restaurant, up to teachers, and there's that broad spectrum, but no one, no one's having to go to the federal government and say, hey, can you pay my rent for me? That's not.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead.
From what I just found on the government website, the Section 8 housing requirement for Gilver, Gilbert County, which is smaller, its largest population is Pickens County, is $33,000 for a two-person family, so.
That's good, my house.
I live there.
All right. Do you have anyone else here to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am. Just down, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Angie Miller, 275 Arbor Hills, North. I'm a disabled veteran, 100% service connected. Most of my veterans that are service connected, with 100% service connected, make roughly what I make, $46,000. Most of us now have put $100,000 plus down on houses. We pay our bills. Bringing something like this in, slapped me in the face, slapped veterans that have worked their tails off to get where I'm at. I live in a wonderful community, and bringing basically a, this is not a tax credit, I hear what you're saying, but this is government assisted into a community that is a well-built, well-organized. This is, this is past low-income housing. This is not $250,000. You haven't said anything about what do they qualify. Most people have worked their tails off to get good credit, have great jobs, pay their bills. Do they get in with zero or no credit? I've paid my bills since I was 18. I served my country. All of these things, for somebody that may or may not keep a job, that may or may not show up to work just because they don't want to work at $950 an hour job, when the Pentagon laid off, I still went to work and worked for McDonald's. So you're telling me that somebody that works at a low-income job can come into this community and slide right up to where these people back here, who have stood up and said, there's no space for it, the infrastructure won't hold up, and you have not said not one time that you're going to come in and build up infrastructure, that you're not going to pave the road? I haven't heard one thing that says you're going to do the right thing to help up this community.
One minute.
So do you have a plan for infrastructure to embrace the two-inch pipe? Do you have anything in place that's going to help with traffic? Do you have anything that's going to tell me that it's not truly government-assisted housing? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, can I address this? I hate to, I hate to not address and give these folks the.
Time starts, three minutes, go ahead.
All right. So we have agreed to the conditions to improve Darnell Road and the existing water and sewer infrastructure to tie back into the city's facilities. Additionally, I certainly understand the concern about it being government housing. I've dealt with it on many occasions, and I understand it personally myself. All I can do is lay out, there's 800 pounder in the room, and one of them, of which is the state government, the other of which is the investor who's going to invest upwards of $13 million in this to make sure I do it correctly, within the city's requirements and within the state's requirements, and with the requirements that they have. I can 100% guarantee that, that I've built over 36 of these properties, and I stand behind all of them, but I certainly don't discount the citizens concerned about infrastructure. I will say regarding our residents, they all have to pass a background check, they all have to pass a credit check, because I'm running a business, and I need our residents to pay, to be able to pay their rent, or else I can't operate my property and pay the debt service and pay my bills and pay my employees. On top of that, we have a third-party property management company that manages 10,000 units that will be managing this on a day-to-day basis, that report directly to us. Again, I live right down the road here, and I would probably live next door to this property any day of the week.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anyone else here wishing to speak on this item? Jill, let's sit down first, and I'll give you, sir. Yes, sir, just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Ronald Williams, 43 Darnell Road.
Thank you, sir.
I'll bet that you'll do this right near door, you'd be against it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Jackie McFlure, 215 Darnell Road. I agree with all these people, the road, the community, you can paint it, you can call it anything you want to, but it's still low-income housing, either way you look at it. You can call it affordable housing, you can say it's not good. If you're getting tax credit, it's government funded. It has something to do with the government. The road is a safety issue. It's, we, it's a racetrack over there now. Sarah's had wrecks in her front yard. I've had cars up in my front yard, and we get all this traffic from Hudson Creek and all the other places that are being built on Philadelphia Road. And the next question is, where y'all gonna get the water from? You've got Publix coming in, you've got Chick-fil-A, you've got all these other things. Wasn't it just a few years ago, we were going to have to alternate before we could wash our cars? We have no infrastructure. Y'all are putting the cart before the horse. And I understand what you're trying to do, but you're making money off of it. You're destroying our property values by putting in a low-income housing, and that's what you, you can call it whatever you want, but it's low-income housing, period.
Thank you, sir.
I certainly appreciate the comments. I would just say, you know, the Chick-fil-A's of the world, the Publix's of the world, the Home Depots of the world, the folks who work there do have to have somewhere to live. I'm just speaking from my side and from other municipalities that I've worked in, other rural municipalities that are in growth corridors. The folks who work in your, in your town, you'd rather them spend your money in your town than somewhere else, but that's just, that's what we assume.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Stacy McFlure. I live at 215 Darnell Road. I understand what you're trying to do, I appreciate it, but at the same time, where do you get your numbers? Where are the statistics that show that that is necessary and needed on that road? Have you called the other apartments around the area, seen what their waitlist is, how long they've been on that waitlist? I mean, where do you get the numbers to support this on that road?
Thank you, ma'am.
I guess in response to that, I would say not necessarily on this particular road, but in general in the area, we've had a market analysis done, and I could build, right now we're proposing 38 units, I could build 308 units, 380 units, and I wouldn't have a concern about leasing it up and not need that house.
Do you have, yes, ma'am.
Can I make one more comment?
You did have a minute left.
So I had a message that come through to me this past week. I'm in ministry. I had a young lady that's got four children. She didn't have, didn't have money to pay her rent this past week. So you told me you could rent 400 more? How many times do these people lay on their rents? People don't have money right now, but you can rent all these apartments. Are they coming from here?
Yes.
30 seconds.
But in part of that, the reasoning behind that is our rents aren't as high as what, as what's being charged. So when I, when I say yes, I actually know that it's 100% sure that right now we have a shortage of affordable housing here in Jasper, across the state, everywhere else. But our rent structure of. Current position for the structure, I'm sorry, let me get it back to my right page. Where I'm going, anywhere between 550 up to 950 doesn't exist in the city. Especially to the extent at which I'm providing, I would be providing it at a high level of service and a high level of progress.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I have another question. Says you could rent more, more units. Okay, there's an acre, almost an acre of hazy land, where an honorable council member owns right across that, and you fill those up, where's the next building going to go? Is it going to continue? So what kind of conflict are we going to get into? The same people that's selling you this property?
The same people that's selling you this property, owns a property across the road. So how many more? Are you going to put all four hundred in there on those? You know, I mean...
No, it's a fair question.
When does a drove stop?
Yeah, it's a fair...
And another question is, is if you can rent thirty-eight, but where's all these people living now?
They're living in sub-sandier housing, where they're living out of town and driving...
And driving up here to make these... They're telling me that they're driving from Atlanta or Woodstock up here to come up here and make our lower median income. It's what y'all survey is saying. So they're driving up here to come to work? And why every day you see in the papers where people's jobs? We're hiring, we're hiring. Can't find anybody to work. Have you been to any restaurants? Have you been to any businesses around here? Most people, you can't get away, you don't, because they don't have any... The stakeouts are over here close. Can't get them anywhere to work.
And I... My response to that would be in general that they can't get folks to work because it's hard for folks to afford to live up here to go to work.
All right, then Tom, I'm going to cut you off. Do you have any other citizens? Yes, ma'am.
I want to say that Darnell Road is a beautiful little road. The farm on either side, the hay fields. The homes are well-kept. The grass is always mowed. We're a friendly little road. We know everybody and take care of everybody. And please don't let this be destroyed for the sake of thirty-eight low-income apartments. Thank you.
Do you have anyone else who wants to speak on this item that has not previously spoken? All right. Thank you all very much. I will move on under public hearing to item number two. Item number two is a request to rezone. I'm going to turn it over to Mary Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, residents. This is item number two.
Go ahead, Ms. Burgess.
Thank you. This is item number two on the agenda. This is a request to rezone twenty-five point six-five acres along Philadelphia Road from RF to MFR, multi-family residential. So the existing conditions is currently this lot is vacant. There are utilities in the area, and it has just shy of twelve-hundred linear feet along Philadelphia Road. As you can see, it's the one with the big red star on it. So across the way is city zoned residential agriculture. Right now, that is farmland. To the west, we have what is zoned commercial along our five-fifteen corridor, and it has a vacant residential unit on it now. We do have... To the east is what is known as Rolling Meadows, which is the new townhome development that is going in on Philadelphia. Just folks getting ready to start building. And then to the south, we have a county road, zoned highway business, mobile home park. So similar to what we were just talking about, this is another DCA, Department of Community Affairs project. They are two going after the low-income tax incentive housing project. So this will be done in two phases with sixty units in three buildings. Again, with the median incomes that they're looking at, this area is considered the North Georgia Commercial Corridor. And as our comprehensive plan says in our future development, as you see, that black arrow is right outside the red, which is how that commercial corridor does develop in the same pattern. So you have commercial, multi-family, attached single-family, and then single-family, and so forth. So that's usually how you want to develop your rings of development from commercial outward. So again, this is going to be for affordable workforce housing opportunities. So this one, we got a little more information about what the rents are and how they will be handling the income. So if you look at some of those, so one-bedroom, one-bath, seven-hundred square feet. So the market rate would be eleven-hundred dollars, whereas you have the sixty percent of AMA would be nine-hundred-and-thirty-one and so on. So it goes down per the type. So you have a number of units that would be that type. And then what is required and what is the rent on those. So these are a couple of the examples that the advocate has done. There's one in Ball Ground, known as Abington Ridge. There's another one in Centerville. Again, they are just apartment complexes. So this one is, as you can see, it has the challenge of that three-hundred-foot utility easement that goes right down the property. And it's, I believe, it's a power easement, and there's gas in there as well. And so you do have to develop around that. You can't have any structures in it, but you can use it for parking and other alternatives. So this is going to be a two-phase project if approved with a total of a hundred-and-twenty units. The allowable number of units that would be with this development would be two-hundred-and-five units. However, one of the conditions of approval is to limit it to a hundred-and-twenty units and not the two-hundred-and-five. So if this project was not to be awarded by DCA, anyone who wants to build out the project would have to come back to council in order to get additional units. So as with the other project, a traffic impact assessment will need to be done, and this will include all of the future traffic to be developed when Rolling Meadows, the subdivision to the east, is fully built out. So at our traffic impact assessments, tell us what we need to develop in order for us to create a safe travel for all the residents. So this may not have been done in the past, but this is the direction we are moving in to make sure that we do have safe travel. And I apologize for not explaining that a little thoroughly in the previous one. Again, I am asking for about ten percent of these units, or twelve of them, be at that forty percent of AMA. You know, when I got out of grad school, I was in affordable housing. As a planner, I was making thirty-two thousand dollars a year. So I can totally attest that these are great developments, and I support affordable housing because I wouldn't have been able to do my job because that was on Cape Cod, Massachusetts, so. So again, Grant, we talked about water and sewer. Number four on this is that we do not guarantee water and sewer. We do not guarantee you capacity. And by accepting these conditions of approval, you understand that. So we're not going to... We aren't approving things and giving people the water and sewer. If we don't have it, it will be delayed until we can get it, or it may not even work at all. And lastly, our condition number five. So these are all the conditions... All these conditions are based off of our current zoning. So you have to comply with zoning, first and foremost, which includes your stormwater, your traffic, your lot layout. Everything has to comply with our current zoning regulation. That also includes buildings, all the building regulations and water maintenance. So we have to make sure we get that water quality reviewed by our engineering crew. And then we have all the other things like streets, curbs, sidewalks, utilities, and vegetation. That's all I have. Yep, that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. You're welcome. In the audience, do you have any others here this evening to speak on this item? Yes, sir. Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Johnson. I live in seventy-six Arbor Hills Place. Been a resident up here since two thousand and one, this time. Was here the first time back when Harley Campbell was the sheriff. So I've been right this place since before the interstate was here. Well, interesting. The biggest problem I'm having with all of this that's going on and is going after the one big gorilla in the room is Philadelphia Road along the Darnell Road. The traffic already has doubled or more from what it was six years ago. The traffic lights are not timed enough just to even get turned out without two revolutions. It's going to get worse as this Rolling Meadows goes. It's already approved, I get it. But on the other side of the road, on Philadelphia, we've got a hundred house subdivision that we go in. There's land next to our business on the other end of that road that has been entertaining a subdivision. I don't know how far that has got. But now we've got Darnell coming in there. So we've got the equivalent of housing that's going to bring a thousand cars or more into that road in the next several years. There's no way that's going to have to be widened out with turn lanes, XL, Dcel. There's just a lot to it. And you've got infrastructure too. But my biggest thing is the roads in this area cannot handle that right now. And I think it's too much development, too fast in one area. I'm not against the housing. I know people got to have places to live. I just think we need to pump the brakes on this a little bit. We've got enough going on as it is.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any others here this evening to speak on this item?
Yes, sir.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Matt Monroe. I'm with Ray Ventures Group. I'm representing this property. Our company address is two-nine-six-four Peachtree Road, Atlanta, Georgia. Just to address that comment real quick, you know, I don't think it's capturing this condition, but we are capturing on the site plan, which is contemplating a Dcel lane, a turn lane for this property to help with the speed and deceleration to make a right turn into this development once completed. And of course, you know, we fully understand a full traffic impact analysis would need to be completed on the development, before development. But just to kind of introduce our company a little bit, very similar to what Mr. Thompson said. You know, we are vying for the Georgia Department of Community Affairs tax credits. Our company's been in business since two thousand and seven. Our owner has been developing workforce housing since nineteen ninety. We own twenty-seven-hundred units across Georgia. We also work in other states. We own, we develop, and we operate all these properties. We have properties, I think, we've owned since nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-four, mid-nineties, that we've renovated over the years to bring them back to code and continue owning them. We have a professional property manager that's on site every day. As Mr. Thompson mentioned, we very much do run this like any other market-rate property. We're in control of who comes in, running rent checks, background checks, evictions, full landscape management, full property management and maintenance. And there are a few brief photos, but I just want to mention a couple of properties that are very similar. We did one in Ball Ground back in...
One minute.
Twenty-twenty-one, Abington Ridge. And we've done quite a few at that size. And that's kind of, you know, the design and the scale we contemplate for this. Two, three-story splits, balcony apartments, good amenities, including playground, community centers, gym, computer center, community room, laundry room, fully landscaped, community gardens. But I'll stop there. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any... Yes, ma'am.
Can I speak again?
Absolutely, it's a different item.
Okay. On this particular item right here, I live at Arbor Hills, which is right down from this particular. But those two properties, Philadelphia Road and Rolling Meadows, if those two are brought into play, we're looking at seven-hundred-and-eighty cars minimum. If each house has two cars, that's seven-hundred-and-eighty vehicles added to that short lane of the highway in between five-fifteen and basically Main Street, which I believe is a talking road. But you're talking about bringing that many cars. That's three hundred, I believe it's three-hundred-and-ninety units. I think we have one-twenty, and then the other has seventy. So it's basically three-hundred-and-ninety units. So even if you drop it down to one car, which is not usually how it works, but just the cars alone up and down the traffic. And I hear what you're saying, sir, about you're going to do a slow lane and all that. You would have to have a turning lane, a passing lane, basically. But it always goes back to traffic and infrastructure. That much added to just that short area of road. That's a lot of water flow. That's a lot of traffic going in and out. And I was talking to Brandon the other day about, has anybody seen what looks like there's possibly a sinkhole that's trying to open up on Philadelphia where it looks like the dump trucks have been going back and forth, just on Philadelphia? Right now, that road looks like it could possibly use a new paving. We can't handle any more cars on that road right now. I'd hate to see what another, almost a thousand, like Bill said, on that road. I appreciate Atlanta. I love going down there to eat. But Jasper ain't Atlanta.
Thank you. Do you have any others who want to speak on this item this evening?
Could I just make a quick distinction? That we are contemplating two phases. Right now, we're putting in for sixty units to begin with. The second phase would be if that's successful in a future year. But yes, we wanted to be upfront that it is... You know, if we're successful with the first phase, we would hope to add a second. And just the unit types. One-bedroom, one-bath would be twenty-one of the sixty units to begin with. Two-bedroom, two-bath would be thirty-three. And then the three-bedroom, two-bath would be six units. Just to kind of break out, you know, the number of bedrooms and potential cars and stuff like that.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any others here this evening who should speak on this item? Okay, no further discussion. We'll move on to item number three under public hearing. Request for modification to ordinance. Mary Burgess, I have you here.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Council, residents. This is item number three to discuss a request to modify ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-five, known as Jasper Village and also Haley Village as it turned midway between approval by removing six-point-six-nine acres of parcel zero-three-zero-beat-zero-six-one-zero-zero-one and modify other previously approved conditions. So this development was approved in two thousand and twenty-one for a hundred single-family homes, ninety-nine townhomes. Those are the darker shader ones to the north and to the west of the property. Eleven-point-two acres of commercial along Philadelphia and also the five-fifteen up towards the top. And they were to have three access points, one off Appalachia Court and two off of Philadelphia lining up with the existing H. Mullins and Pinnacle. So this was previously approved. So right now, the current draft plan is to have a hundred-and-two single-family homes, sixteen acres of commercial with two access points. So it's still removing that parcel. So if you go back to this, all of those gray shaded area and Appalachia Court entrance are gone. So no more townhomes and just the single-family homes at this point. So the average lots over there are the fifty-by-a-hundred. That's in the right corner. So this is what the draft plan looks like right now for a hundred-and-two homes. So all of these homes have to be fifty-by-a-hundred lots. And they have to meet the stormwater requirements. And as you see, all those squiggly lines to the left and around it all, that's the creek. And most of it, the reduction is due to the fact that it's too expensive to car across the creek with water, sewer, and then vehicles as well. So that being said, the modification is needed. So, um, that being said, the modification is needed per our regulations. Anytime you change something about a planned unit development, you have to come back and get the okay from the council. So this is what the proposal, um, will look like when built out. Uh, these are the latest plans the developer has provided. As you see right in the middle there, that's the hundred or a hundred and two single-family homes, and then you have a commercial along five fifteen and along Philadelphia. And so this is another, um, drawing that they have done up as, uh, for the commercial and the residential combined. So, um, again, this person, this project has been issued a land disturbance permit, um, and there, they had to, uh, give us a bond to begin logging, um, so that we can ensure that moving forward that this, this isn't somebody who's going to clear the property and then say, ready for development, and then we know what happens with that. It sits with no trees. If that were to happen, cash in the bond and then I'll plant all new trees. So, and I obviously know that you can't get the growth from the years back, but it's a, it's something that we'll, we're trying to work on here. So again, uh, you can't really see it by this drawing, but the intersection right there, that's, um, uh, H Mullins and the new road, and then further down to far right of that picture is the intersection, uh, at five fifteen. As you can see, kind of, there are Dcel, new Dcel lanes, Acel lanes, turning lanes, all being added to that area as part of their development and buildup. Um, they will have to basically redesign the road and, and to accommodate this. So, um, when we're talking about traffic impact statements, this is what our engineer told me they had to do is for this project to move forward. So, uh, against, uh, for the recommendation, a modification is to approve by removing the original parcel, six point six nine acres, uh, because it was not purchased by the applicant and the person who owns the land, uh, has a PUD designation, which you can't do anything with. And so to revert it back to the R one, the low-density single-family residential that it originally was. Uh, future commercial development must adhere to all current, at the time of the site plans the middle zoning ordinance, though, so that ensures that we have the most up-to-date relevant, uh, site plan and zoning correspondence. So if we go on to improve our zoning code more in the future, the commercial will have to adhere to that. And then the existing conditions, uh, that do not affect the, uh, the, uh, the development assets can remain.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three, do we have any others here this evening wishing to speak on this item? Yes, sir. Go state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. I'm with the King of Kings Church in the north part of this property.
Yes, sir.
Do I understand now that the, the park on Appalachian Circle is the six acres that's been deleted? So you're gonna have two entrances to this. Where are your two entrances gonna be? Because one was supposed to be at Appalachian Circle next to our property.
So this pointer thing doesn't really work. It's gonna go up the line. So this right here is H Mullins. So here's your one entrance, and then here's the other one lined up with the pinnacle entrance down here.
Okay, so it's not coming off Appalachian Circle?
No, this is the, we're all, we have that creek back there. That's where they're stopping. So they're not going to that six acres up there where all the townhomes were gonna be.
That works, because the driveway would be deleted where they had planned to have that original and wouldn't work. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Do you have any others here this evening wishing to speak on this? Yes, sir. Go state your name and address for the record.
Yes, uh, Jerry Phillips, uh, six seventy-three five Katniss Boulevard, represent the, uh, the ownership and the, the master developer along this. Uh, and that's actually, you brought up a good point. When we started getting into the engineering and looking at, uh, the site, uh, the impact, uh, the, to do the stream crossing, the elevation would have been very high and it just would have destroyed a significant portion of the creek. And then also having that access point go through the church parking lot was less than the desirable. And then one of the things really we're asking is something you don't really normally hear is we're looking to reduce the residential. I mean, we're, we're cutting it in half, we're getting rid of all the townhomes, because something else, uh, just as we're going through the development process, I mean, we got eighty townhomes across the street, I got two hundred and seventy right up the road, three hundred and fifty, you don't need another hundred townhomes. So we're taking the townhomes off. Uh, and also we had the townhomes up on the highway, which is not really where you wanna have townhomes. So we're, we're, we're just itching all the townhomes. And because we're doing that, uh, it's given us more room for the single families. So that the fifty by a hundred Y was the minimum on the PUD. That's obviously five thousand square feet. The average lot size is sixty-two hundred square feet. So we got about twenty percent increase on the lot size. We have more open space. We have like seven acres of open space now because we have a little bit more room. And the other thing we did is if you look at the original site plan that was approved, it's just all straight rows. It looks like the, and, and we heard this, we're going through the original zoning, the, uh, the worldly preserve where all the homes are just straight. So we, we went back and had the engineer just work with the, the natural topography. So there, uh, there's not a straight, uh, road in development. The commercial is about the same, um, in, in terms of what's under the LVP. Obviously, it's increasing because we've got a little bit of, of kind of a wedge up there through the highway and the stream that's, and it's got its own something. And it's really perfect for, uh, for your, for your future commercial. Uh, and we have a lot of interest to, to do a hotel there. And when we did the traffic study, it actually included a, a hotel, uh, as part of the, the impact. So that's, that's kind of basically where we are.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any others?
You have one more question?
Yes, sir.
On, on water lines, you're, you're gonna, when I, when I built that church, I was gonna have to pull water from way south and all the way through. They only have a two-inch line going all through these houses that come up that creek and past us, and they run out of water at times. Are you planning to bring water up back and through that? And if that goes, we probably wanna hook into it also.
Uh, I don't.
No, they are coming off of Philadelphia Road.
Okay.
For this developer.
Yeah, all our water is coming off of Philadelphia. Yeah, so it shouldn't have any impact on what you're doing.
No, it's not impacting as, as attractive as, if you go back far enough there, it'd be right behind us, and those people back there would probably, the city would probably wanna run more water line back through there because they were looking for a way to do that.
Yeah, I'm sure they're, we were claiming a picture.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Do you have any others here wishing to speak on this item this evening? Yes, sir. As well as yours, go state your name and address, please, sir.
Excuse me. Uh, my name is Larry Wilson. Uh, my address is two six one Whispering Pebbles Trail. Uh, and I live in this area. I got one concern. If you would take one over the back some, please. Uh, one concern that I have is the, the entrance to the residential area, uh, does not show the existing townhouse development, the entrance across the street. The sketch I passed around, I went out there and looked at it. Uh, there's a couple of things on his surveyor, the survey, which is powerful, and I went out and measured and that existing townhouse driveway is sixteen feet from that road. When you, when I sketched it on here, as you can see, the red going east and west is Philadelphia, the one to the south is the existing road, the one to the north is the proposed road, and the two center lines do not line up. That's a traffic problem. It will cause traffic problems in the future. There's also a center line on there that I drew, which connects the two center lines, and with a minor change to his engineering drawings, he could realign that road and make a, a four-way intersection there, uh, and affect basically one lot. May not even affect that one, but, when I get to redesign again. But that's my only concern. And also the, the proposed road does not enter at a ninety-degree angle as currently laid out, and they're about to start grading out there, or will soon, I guess. But a simple realignment of that road will correct that problem. It's gonna be a problem there anyway with the traffic, but the way it's designed or laid out right now, it'll cause much more, uh, a greater problem to, through traffic. And right now, coming out of Hobson Creek along, Hobson Road along, that area generates one minute, uh, about a thousand to twelve hundred trips a day. Most of them come up through this intersection. And that doesn't count what they're gonna generate, what's generated across the street and what's back out Philadelphia Road. So you're looking at anywhere from fifteen hundred to three, to three thousand trips a day when both properties are developed. So you're gonna have some problems there if that, and it'd be, uh, a lot greater if that design is not changed. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Larry.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Do you have anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item this evening?
Mr. Mayor, may I have a place to comment?
Yes, sir.
It's always dangerous when I kind of take this position, but sitting up, uh, here listening to people talk about what could or could not potentially happen to their community, sometimes some things are said out of ignorance and sometimes there are other reasons for not getting the facts right. And, and, and my comments are to try to educate, um, the public, which I think is one of my duties as a council member. First of all, we, we fully understand the issues that we have inherited as in the light star infrastructure and our lack of natural resources, and we have invested taxpayer and other dollars in assessing that, and we have, uh, done that with master planning over infrastructures. We've engaged engineers to make sure that we don't fall into that hole again, and that we get professional evaluations on any of these, um, developments that we bring before you and, and let you speak on. We have a master plan and we're working on a tax improvement plan for forty years. So we're looking at how we're gonna spend taxpayer dollars for forty years from now so that we will not get into the situation that we find ourselves now. We have invested in making sure that we assess the traffic, and certainly the roads have been under-maintained, poorly designed over the years, and we're doing everything in our power to make sure that that doesn't happen again. One other comment that I just wanna make sure that you all understand is that every piece of property, for all intents and purposes, in this city and in this county, there's a particular use by right. That individual has a way, they are legally entitled to use their property the way they see fit, as long as they meet the laws. And so we don't go out and solicit people to bring rezonings to us. They come to us and by law, we have to entertain them. So these, these are tough decisions, and we know that they are, but, but your council, um, we're, we're not crooks, we're not, we don't get our pockets lined. I, I didn't make comment on one of the things tonight because it, there is a kind of potential conflict with a piece of property I own, so I'm, so I'll be recusing myself from one of these decisions tonight. But take, talk to any of us, talk to all of us. We're trying to make really, really tough decisions that are really hard to make. This particular zoning right here, since this came to us, it was originally a, uh, three hundred homes were proposed on this piece of property. There was a use by right for far fewer than that. Since that came to us as a council, we've changed our zoning laws twice to make the density less dense and, and the commercial value increased. And, and, and us holding the line on this PUD that didn't go down the way we originally approved it, we're actually gonna be decreasing the, the dense, uh, the density and increasing the commercial. And that's based on decisions we made in two thousand and twenty-one and, and since then. So we always take it to heart. We love having y'all here. We don't mind. We don't, you don't need to be embarrassed to come. We, we like positive and negative input, and appreciate your attention. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Do we have anyone else here wishing to speak on this item this evening? No other discussion, we will move on to item number four under public hearing. Item number four is a request to modify the zoning ordinance. Mayor Burges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Elizabeth Burges, Director of Planning and Development. So before you, you have, uh, some modifications that we are recommending to update our zoning code to clarify some things that may, um, need to be clarified or to be more direct in how they are found in our zoning code. Uh, as Doug Proctor alluded to, we did update our code, uh, June fifth, twenty twenty-three, and these are just other additional items to add to the strength of the code. So, um, I'm not gonna go through all of these. I can give you the, the, the broad strokes. So Article one, um, has to deal with a land disturbance permit. So this outlines the, um, policy that we currently have, and now it will be part of our actual zoning code where you do not get a land disturbance permit until you have an approved site plan. So, um, as I stated before, you won't see people just mass grading fifty acres and putting a sign up that says, ready for development. So you will not get a land disturbance permit. And you need, in the city of Jasper, you need a land disturbance permit for point ten and up of acre dis, of disturbance. So, um, we are keeping a close eye on that because we are very much aware of our stormwater issues. That rolls into the second one, which deals with, um, what is required to get a site plan review. So number thirteen is stormwater management plan, and this is just outlining that this plan shall comply with the current Georgia Stormwater Management Manual, DSMN, uh, for quality and quantity. So to make it simplified, it says whatever you, whatever leaves your property now for water has to be the same amount and the same quality when you're done developing that. So your, your pre and post have to be the same number. So they have to mitigate all that stormwater on-site, so it doesn't get into our roads and doesn't get into our streams. Um, one other thing to add to that is stormwater detention and retention shall be on the property being developed. So no more going into a private property detention, because if they're public roads and we have our public system going into private property, there becomes a conflict. So we're doing away with that altogether. So next is parking and access. So that has to do with non-residential uses, and that's to ensure the safety of our residents who are out on a commercial lot and you're trying to access different, um, outdoor stored materials, let's say windows, doors, sheds, things that are out on a, a lot. This is to ensure that you have a safe travel, that they have to be paved in order to prevent you having any accidents, and also you can't have dirt and you can't have, um, stone. Gravel and loose stone are already prohibited by our regulation. Uh, the third one is to, uh, add, uh, to clarify, um, one of the items on our use table. And currently, we have liquor and beer package set, uh, sale, so your basic package store. So we're clarifying this, just to say liquor, beer, and wine package, and where they're allowed to be, uh, where you're allowed to have those types of stores. Um, the last, the next one is for, um, outdoor lighting. This is just another thing that has come up with the time, changing of times and, uh, different availability of products. So wood light poles are prohibited in all districts, so you won't be able to utilize a telephone pole and put a light on. It has to be decorative, it has to basically be attractive for that development. Let's see. Uh, so landscaping, this is, uh, something new. So sidewalks are required in all residential development and commercial development, at least on the length of your front edge on the property and within subdivisions like you just saw. So this is payment in lieu of sidewalk construction. Uh, we realize there, there are some areas that will not be able to have sidewalks because of the steep slope on the side of the road, or it's dangerous, or future construction. So what this lays out is that the applicant will, will have to basically say the reason why they cannot provide that sidewalk, and then they have to pay, um, in a And then they have to pay a payment in lieu of sidewalks. So the sidewalk has to be brought to the city specs, so four foot wide, the sub base, ADA ramps, all of that is priced out. And then we add a twenty percent contingency on top of that. And the person has to provide the funds. And that goes into our sidewalk fund, which will be maintained by our street department and used for future engineering and maintenance for existing sidewalks in the area. I think that's all I have. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on item number four this evening? Any comment? We will move on to item number five, which is list as number two from the unfinished business, town annex four ninety Lively Lane into the city. Ms. Burges.
This is my favorite item of the evening. I'm asking for a continuance due June third. Don't have to.
Do we have anyone here this evening wishing to speak on this item? Anything further, Ms. Burges?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, being no further comment, ladies and gentlemen, this time I will end the public Moving on to the next agenda item, council, you do have a consideration agenda before you yield the floor.
Make a motion, will you approve consideration agenda?
Have a motion to have second.
Second, sir.
Motion of second, E. Discussion, council. All in favor?
Aye.
Both say? Thank you, council. Unfinished business, item number one, chemical holdings. Request be continued until six thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Burges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been working diligently. We have received some new plans, some stormwater plans and some high grow plans. So we are moving forward to coming into compliance and hopefully finishing this project. So continuance due June third.
Council, yield the floor for a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say? Thank you, council. Unfinished business, item number two, believe you are looking for continuation on that one also.
So we did that under the public hearing. It's actually not business yet.
Awesome. Thank you, ma'am. Council, moving on to new business, I will declare publicly there's a conflict with myself and item number three, I will not be part of the discussion and/or the vote. Mayor Pro Tim will lead discussion and vote on that item. Item number one, heading of Sergeant Jimmy Long with the Jasper Police Department. Chief Matt Doc, in turn for, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and council. A little lighter notes, a little different. As y'all know, for the past two years, we have done some of the first things, swearing in and stuff like that. So tonight, this evening, we would like to recognize Jimmy Long for being promoted from patrolman to the rank of sergeant. Jimmy Long has been with the Jasper Police Department for four years and then all twelve. He has shown his ability to provide purpose, persistence, and passion, which are three qualities of good leader. And he has met all the requirements for the Jasper Police Department to be a sergeant. So at this time, I would like to ask his wife, Leslie, to come up and sit to chief
Moving on to new item, this is number two, introduction of new utilities director.
Mr. Collins, come on up. So I don't have a fancy pen or anything like that to give Andrew, but when I tell you that I am excited about Andrew being here, that is probably the understatement of it. Mr. Collins has been hired as our new utilities director. He comes to us from the city of Savannah, where he spent many years in the water and sewer utilities department, starting from the very ground floor all the way up to utilities director. And then he has relocated with his family to North Georgia, and we are pleased to have him here at the city of Jasper. He is a licensed plant operator. He is an instructor with Georgia Water and Wastewater Institute. And that's going to prove to be a real benefit for the city as we will be able to offer some training capabilities that we would normally have to send someone away for a week to be able to advance their career. And so we'll have that in-house training ability here. Andrew has experienced many of the things that we are just now experiencing in our utilities department. And I think he's going to provide a wealth of information and experience that will help us navigate these next steps. I'm excited to tell you also that Andrew's graduating from the UGA Certified Public Manager Program later on this month. And so he has that background as well. He is going to be over public works, our utilities line maintenance, our plant operations, and then utility special projects. We are very excited to have him here and I hope you all look forward.
Mr. Mayor, council, I appreciate you for serving this role this evening. We have an opportunity to enter into, potentially enter into an agreement with an organization that will benefit us greatly. I'd like to invite Conia and let her give a little information on the background and what got us here.
Hey, I'm Conia, I'm in court. I'm requesting switching of software companies to benefit the city and make my life a little easier. So I've just recently found out that my current software company, the price has gone up. They're changing out to cloud-based programs that I believe will cause us issues. I've looked at a couple of different companies and the I three vertical CJT has everything I need to do my job. I'll also be able to share information with random agencies like Pro Bay Ford, City Canton, I think Hawassee and Woodbridge are on that list. That'll be beneficial to us for people who are calling, looking for their tickets. I can be up in going lots of them probably around a month's time. So they're willing to work with us in switching from the other software over to this one. They're going to convert everything. I'm just ready to get started. We're going to fucking do it quick. And I will show you the contract in front of you.
So there are operational efficiencies that we're going to gain from this?
Yes.
And it's cheaper?
Yes.
And possibly related to another item on the agenda interacts with something that we're considering on the police force side as well?
It do, it does. The current company we have is who the police department currently have. And they've already switched to this cloud-based. And police departments have issues and I don't have to deal with those kind of issues because it's been a nightmare.
And this came through the Public Safety Committee, is that correct? Called before council. Council, I entertain a motion to agree or disagree with the approval of municipal software I three verticals LLC.
Make a motion, we purchase the, well, it says, you guys want to do it from the committee side?
Yeah, yeah, we can. So make a motion and move forward, changing over to I three vertical CJT software system.
Mr. Hannah, appreciate that. Any second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes. In addition to preserve the protection of our potential conflict, I need a motion to, for myself, to execute the agreement rather than asking Mayor Rafferty to do that. So I need a motion to...
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Both say aye. Motion passes. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. End this agenda number four, consideration approval for request to resume.
So the first one for consideration for approval is one hundred dollar mill road. That is four point seven three acres to be rezoned or what we say downzone from C two to multifamily residential with the conditions laid out here.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, this time, yield the floor for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, by my...
Yes, sir.
Despite having no relationship with the owner of this property, I do have an adjacent piece of property and I'll be accusing myself of reading discussion about that.
Yes, sir. Council, at this time, yield the floor for a motion.
For discussion, I make a motion, we approve the reasonable of Darnell Road property.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, council, discussion.
This meets comprehensive plan. It does not guarantee water and sewer and does require a impact study for traffic. I think with those protections and the plans themselves have not been presented yet or approved. And with the considerations that they have agreed to, I think it's time to move on with the next steps.
Any further discussion, council?
Yeah, what kind of timeframe are we doing? Are we aware of that, of when this will be built?
I'll let Ms. Burges speak on this. This is simply for the resume.
So this would not because of the DCA requirement? So the deadline for the application is May seventeenth, and then they usually get approval anywhere from August to November. And then if you go into the planning phase and soup to nuts, probably eighteen months before they get a shovel on the ground after that.
Any further discussion, council?
Mayor, I do want to note that some conditions got added, I think, between commission stage. So we're going to have to tweak the written ordinance if the motion passes to reflect those additional conditions.
More conditions? Yes, sir. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, council? All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Motion passes.
Mayor, only two voted in favor. And I think under our charter, takes the affirmative vote at three in order to pass.
With a refusal of one, do you plead my vote?
I think under the charter, you only get the vote in the event of a tie.
I, can I make a motion, we table until we have full council in attendance?
Yes, sir. Mr. Soplin, we do have a motion second on the floor that's been voted on. We're clear under Robert's rules in order to move on to the motion.
If it's illegal or if it's not permitted.
Well, I think if you made the original motion, probably has to be a motion to withdraw or whatever.
Make a motion, will we withdraw?
I have a motion to withdraw the original motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to withdraw. Any discussion? All in favor to withdraw?
Aye.
Both say? Thank you, council.
Make a motion, we table this vote until we have full council representation.
I have a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say? Thank you, council. This item has been taken. Thank you, Mr. Soplin. Item number five, consideration approval. Mary Burges.
Yeah, this is from the public hearing that we just had. This is Philadelphia Road, two phases, sixty units per phase, standard conditions of approval, which do include the traffic impact and the no guarantee of infrastructure such as water and sewer, and then applicable site plan review zoning applicability regulations, all of that. So this is also a DCA project.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, this time, we give the floor for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table until we have a full council.
I have a motion to have second. Motion to table, council, do I have a second?
I'll draw my motion.
Motion failed. Council, at this time, entertain a motion on the floor for consideration, deny, or table, and go with this option.
Like to make a motion to deny request.
I have a motion to deny, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to deny, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Soplin, we have a tie on council. Does that require by charter or vote to the mayor?
It does.
I hereby vote in order to deny said request. Let it be known for the record, two for, two against, I break a tie with a vote to deny. Thank you, council. Item number six, consideration approval of request for notification. Mary Burges.
Before you have a request to modify ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five to amend to remove six point six nine acres and also to ensure that the new commercial development meets the most current zoning, and then all other conditions shall remain.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, at this time, yield the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to table this, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion... Motion and a second, council, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, council. Motion table passes. Item number seven, consideration approval of modifying zoning ordinance, Mary Burgess.
So I have some text amendments here that have been discussed previously in our public hearing, and also with a work session in committee. As have been provided to you before, the changes are in red, the new language is in red, and the strike through is the removal of the information that's out of touch.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, you have the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that, modification to, do any ordinance be approved? Just like a bit.
Motion and a second, council, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, council. Item number eight, consideration approval of GFO drinking water state revolving loan. It's Kim Governor. Mary, I think you get to catch a breath.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So you'll recall in March, I came before y'all with a GFO loan agreement for Clean Water, which ironically is sanitary sewer. A couple of projects that GMC, our consultants, have recommended that we go ahead and tackle initially. Those are critically prioritized projects. Tonight, I bring before you two drinking water projects that are critically prioritized and that we have been approved for GFO funding for as well. The first project is improvements to our water treatment plant over on Woodland. This project is multifaceted. There are lots of moving parts and lots of things that will be improved with this project, but it includes upgrades to the filtration system, concrete restoration throughout the plant, control valve replacement and automation. There will be significant electrical upgrades that are done, upgrades to the chemical containment and storage areas, and replacement of the turbid meters, the lighting, and then security improvements. Security as in security cameras, new gates, things like that, all items that EPD has noted that we need to pursue during our most recent sanitary survey. So that is the first project. That has been estimated at $2 million. The second project is similar to what we had on the Clean Water side, our sanitary sewer programs, and that is rehab of the distribution system. And so again, multifaceted project, there will be multiple things going on. That is going to be isolation valves to allow us to, when we have an issue, narrow down the area that we are actually working in without having to put blocks and blocks of people out of water. It will be replacement and upsizing of multiple mains, and that will improve pressure in some areas. We have areas where we need looping or where we need backfeeds to improve the reliability and continuity of service. That has been estimated at $1.5 million for a total loan of $3.5 million. The rate on this project, because there is a conservation aspect to the projects in them themselves, GFO lowers that interest rate, it is 2.28% for 20 years, and this was factored into our 2024 budget. We actually budgeted a higher loan amount, and it brought that back down. So we are asking for approval of these loan documents so we can go ahead and get started on these important projects.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Council, at this time, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the GFO drinking water revolving loan, proposed?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, any discussion? For those of you still with us, thank you for hanging out and being with us, pressing through this. This is a major step in us rehabbing our current existing infrastructure, and this is not the only step we are taking, so I appreciate you. No other discussion, council, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Item number nine, consideration approval of change order number one.
Okay, so this evening, you will recall that when our USDA project, which is consists of two items, it's the plant expansion, and then it is also changing our discharge outfall, which required new 16-inch effluent forced main to be constructed from the plant over to Long Swamp Creek. When this project was originally bid out in 2022, the 16-inch effluent forced main was designed within a Georgia Power pole line, a transmission easement. We still had to obtain our own easements across those properties that were being affected, and we were unsuccessful in getting the middle piece, which was incidentally the largest parcel. As we navigated through those issues, Turnip Seed, our engineers of record for this project, looked at a couple of different alternatives, one of which has been approved, we have the easements, and T-Stanco, our contractor, is currently constructing in that alignment. It's not significantly longer, there's not a great distance amount that changes, that is requiring this change order. What is requiring the change order, though, is the significant topography changes from the Georgia Power easement to our new alignment of the forced main. Significantly more up and down, it needs more clearing, there is significant tree work removal that has to be done along this easement, there is actual road replacement and rehab that we will need to do, and because at a certain point in the alignment, the forced main actually changes essentially to gravity, and so it is racing downhill, and you need some control structures to slow that flow down. And so those are four very large structures that were not planned for in the original, when this was originally bid out. T-Stanco brought to us at the last USDA progress meeting, a change order request for labor. This extends the project by 60 days for the additional materials, for the additional clearing of grugging, for the concrete that now must be poured, for rehab of the easement area, because we're no longer going through a power line easement, which is essentially clear. This is full of obstacles. The amount is $907,000 for this change order. This is actually less than what they have put into some of the extra work that they have done on behalf of their work on this project, and it has been reviewed by Lamar Rogers, our engineer of record, and we are asking for approval so that they may continue.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Council, you have the floor for a motion.
Make a motion we approve the change order?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
One second, ma'am.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Under Committee reports, A, Public Safety and Judicial, Mr. Hannah, you are here on this evening's term.
Once again, I wanted to say congratulations to our police force and your development staff. It's great to see Sergeant Long up here tonight, and all the people who are supporting your team. Also want to promote Coffee with a Cop, will be held May 20th at 6:00 PM at the Carriage House. Come have a discussion, fun topic, and learn more from our police department. And then I can't mention our fire department, give them a plug. So Burbana's effect, May 1st to September 30th, and our municipal court, we got our metal detector machine in and saw pictures tonight, it looks great, so everything's operational there, so good to go.
Thank you, sir. We do have a capital improvement project going on at the fire department, so concrete work is underway, should be wrapped up soon.
Oh, you're perfect.
Thank you, sir. Committee B, Parks and Properties, Mr. Faust, Mr. Hannah?
We're still waiting to hear back from Cherokee Nation about Road Park. Also too, we're finally able to get doors swigged, and we just got a fine today for grand opening. Very excited about that.
And then Jasper City Park Duck Pond, we're going to hold a town hall so we can capture the voice of our residents here on May 21st, 6:00 PM at Chattahoochee Tech. So we'd love to hear you come out, give your support, and let us know what you'd like to see.
Thank you. Committee C, Interprets, phone, Mr. Looney, Dr. Proctor.
Westwater Land Expansion continues to live along with a projected finish date October of this year. We have already mentioned the forced main affluent, I think the biggest news, which I think we may have touched on last month, but it's been confirmed in writing from EPD that they have approved our original, first item in Arkansas, is going to evaluate the possibility of having surface water in our mines, which would be a great win if that turns out to be the case. And I think, I think those are the main topics I need to mention.
Thank you for approving the change order on Stanco, that's going to keep our project moving.
Thank you, gentlemen. Committee D, Development and Local Infrastructure, Dr. Proctor, Mr. Faust.
I remember the last time we met, I was in Florida, so. Well, a lot of exciting developments, obviously some big, big topics tonight that, you know, appeal to the sympathy of the public to wade through these, help us wade through these things, and appreciate their understanding of council's strong ability to navigate these waters.
I'll just say I appreciate what Mr. Mary does, what she has done, and Mayor, I also appreciate your efforts that you put toward this committee to help us guide the city, hopefully grow smart and grow in the right direction. I think you're welcome to play, so I appreciate you, I thank you.
Thank you, Committee.
I'll add one thing, we did discuss in our last meeting, what we have titled the Community Development Director, which it's not been formalized yet, but that will be coming forth before, I mean, before admin and in our committee in the next period of 45 days, so be more to come.
Thank you, gentlemen. Committee E, Finance and Administration, Mr. Looney?
Continuing work on human resource policies and procedures. In the finance area, the audit is essentially completed. Expect them to be given a report in June, they have a good report in June because it needs to be filed by the end of the month, so we will be having audit group join us. We did pass some budget amendments, the other day, and a few came on.
Seeing no other committee reports, council, next item on the agenda is an executive session. Yield the floor for a motion.
Make the motion to go to executive session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, council. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being with us this evening. We are headed into executive session.